All righty, I will call this meeting of the City of Oak Park Heights City Council to order. First item up is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the
Okay, and our next item is approved with the agenda. We do have a consent add-on of Item F, which would be, if I can't read my writing, authorize a letter of support for the Middle St. Croix WMO grant request. And then, under closed session, we're removing Item A discussing labor negotiation strategy.
With that two changes, I'll make the motion approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Next is council and staff reports. The only thing I have is just, we had the Senate bonding tour here this afternoon to discuss our PFAB filtration issue and ask for some money. Also, Councilmember Runk and Councilmember Johnson was there. There you go, the council things. City Administrator.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Just a quick update here. So going off that theme of bonding tours, we'll have the House bonding tour here at City Hall on Friday, November 14th from 1:30 to 2:00. Obviously, that timeframe may change, so mark it and pencil for now. And then, as you added to the one other item on the agenda, got an email today from the St. Croix WMO, the Middle St. Croix WMO regarding a grant request. And so, think there might be some merit. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet since it just came in here today with our staff, but they had a deadline of November 11th, so wanted to get that on the agenda just to authorize having that letter of support here that we'd have the mayor sign if it makes sense. So appreciate you adding that for us.
Did we do a closed session at the end of last meeting that we need to report on, or is that a meeting?
Oh, did we?
We'll come back to you. Please, Chief.
Mayor, Council, and Mr. Mayor, community outreach, we have the boo-bash going on right now for the next hour completing at Kowalski's. They've already had over 500 kids come through our booth. And then Halloween coming up on Friday, we've got a couple of extra officers already assigned to that event, and we'll be passing out candy out of our squads as well. Winter parking is already upon us, our restrictions, that is, coming November 1st from 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., no on-street parking. We'll hand out our yellow cards, just warnings to get everybody back into the swing of things. And then, just an update on the applications for our police officer opening position. Thank you for that approval of the incentives that worked. We've already got 15 applications, so we're hoping to move forward here next week with the round one. And we're still getting amendments, we'll just keep adding. So appreciate that. That's it.
Well, that's kudos to you, Chief, for going outside the box and trying to figure out something different. Way to be ingenious.
Thank you.
As noted in the minutes that we just approved from the last meeting, there was a closed session at the end of the last city council meeting to discuss labor negotiation strategy, and that was pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D .03 subdivision 1B, which allowed direction from the council on labor negotiations. And so that closed session did occur. Staff advised council on kind of the status of where negotiations were, and council provided some generalized input and direction, but no official decisions were made, and of course, those negotiations are still ongoing at this point.
Thank you.
This evening, the recycling award winner, the second winner for the month of October, was Christine Augustine at 5606 Oak Cove North.
Thank you. All right, this is the visitors and public comment part of our meeting. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council with questions or concerns on issues not part of the regular agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes in length. All right, well, seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Approved bills and investments, checks 72,258 to 72,310. Approved city council work session notes from October 14th. Approved city council minutes from October 13th. Authorized staff petition for the removal of MS4 designation. Approved agreement with Eckberg Lammers PC for civil and prosecutorial services. Authorized a letter of support for the Middle St. Croix WMO grant request.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Then roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Littlegerd.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Councilmember Swenson.
Yes.
And Mayor Doherty.
Yes. We have no public hearings this evening, and we have no old business, so we'll move into the new business. First item is central automotive parking lot expansion, conditional use permit, site plan review for 148-1958-59th Street North.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Dave Tremert of Stillwater Auto Holdings LLC has made this application. It's for an amended conditional use permit. It's to allow a change in the auto repair facility in the B2 general business district for a number of parking stalls, a site plan review, and for that amended CUP. The site is 2.6 acres in size. This business was first approved by the council in May of 2019. At their October 9th meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit. The couple of points, parking, again, we have the provisions that essentially need to hit the number right on for parking, and they are asking for additional parking spaces, 27 stalls for a total of 55 parking stalls. Our parking requirements are for 11. What they're finding is that as their business has grown, they have cars that are coming in, they don't service them right away, or they have them done and waiting for the customers to come back, so they do need that additional parking. When they first opened, that was not an issue. It is now an issue for them to have additional parking. The landscaping, too, there are some trees that are being removed. There is a memo from the city arbers that explains that situation, and that's also a condition that the in your packet that reflects that planning commission recommendation and the staff recommendation. And we have Jennifer here from the planning commission, and I don't see anyone from Stillwater Auto Holdings. Any questions?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the permits.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Okay, Item B would be a setback conditional use permit for an accessory building.
Yes, Nicholas and Jessica Ross have applied for this conditional use permit. They proposed accessory building is about 80 square feet, and will be located on the north side of the garage on existing concrete slab, property in zone R1, single-family residential. Also, the planning commission held a public hearing at their October 9th meeting and recommended favorably for this request. In looking at it, accessory buildings are to be required in the rear yard, or are required to be in the rear yard. In this case, the shed will be placed in the side yard adjacent to the house, but they will meet the setback requirements to the property line for that. They will be about two feet from the garage, and that does require some special construction for fire code, building code reasons, and that is all going to be complied with by the applicants. The, again, planning commission looked at the issues. The applicant was at the meeting, and they recommended, as I stated favorably, which is reflected in the resolution in front of you this evening. Any questions?
And I believe the neighbor was in favor of this as well.
Yes, did not have an issue with it. That's correct.
I'll move approval of the conditional use permit.
Second.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Littlegerd.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Councilmember Swenson.
Yes.
And Mayor Doherty.
Yes. Okay, moving on, Item C, conditional use permit for cannabis retail dispensary at 146-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kevin Pata of ABJKM Holdings, Boundary Waters Capital LLC has made application for this conditional use permit. It's for cannabis retail dispensary. It'll be in the Joseph's restaurant space where it's proposed to occupy the entire building. Expected the restaurant would move to a different location in the area. The business would be known as Mango Cannabis. Section 1413 of the city code regulates the operation of cannabis and hemp businesses, and section 401.18 of the zoning ordinance addresses zoning issues. Planning commission reviewed this, held a public hearing at their October 9th meeting, and recommended favorably. This application meets all the criteria for review of the conditional use permit. They're within the buffer areas, or they're outside of the buffer areas, I should say, for cannabis. They have received preapproval from the Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management for the business. Again, this is just for cannabis retail and no growing operations. The report goes through the criteria for review of cannabis business. Parking, the site currently has approximately 60 parking spaces. They're not making any changes to the site. In fact, they're not, at the beginning, when they opened, will not make any changes to the building or to the site. But if they do come through and do make some site changes, some building changes, that will require site plan design review by the planning commission and city council, and possibly might have a conditional use permit for parking at that time and review it. But with no changes to the site, we wouldn't require that at this time. So the resolution reflects the conditions stated in the, stated in the planning reports and recommended by the planning commission. And any questions at this point?
The one question I have is, the same group has applied to put in a cannabis operation just to the west of this in the city of Stillwater, so, I mean, you gotta look and say, what's going on?
Here I sit for you.
I believe, I believe if it wouldn't meet Stillwater's ordinance, it maybe wouldn't meet our ordinance, but.
I just, thanks Scott for answering Runk's question. My name is Jake German. I'm here with Kevin Pata from ABJKM Holdings, seeking to six way, 60th Street North in Oak Park Heights. Again, just to reiterate some of what Scott said, we'd like our operation to align fully with time, place, and manner based standards, hours, signage, lighting, ventilation, odor control, security, and parking. Business will operate only between 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. All signage cannabis imagery or visible products displayed, parking traffic and site access fully meets the city's commercial and buffer requirements. Security will be a top priority for us. Our plans exceed both local and state requirements. And, again, the site is retail only with no cultivation or manufacturing. In summary, we believe that this application reflects the technicality ordinance to regulate adult-use cannabis retail responsibly, protect the community welfare, and support properly cited business operations. We really look forward to being a great community partner with the City of Oak Park Heights, and we respectfully request your approval of the conditional use permit so that the state process may proceed with full local support. Again, we thank you. I know Kevin wants to say a few words, but we look forward to working closely with you guys in the future.
Nice to meet everyone, and my name is Kevin. I'm with ABJKM Holdings. Councilmember Runk, to answer your question, Mango has a family of brands, so we do have multiple retail brands, and we've selected Stillwater at the time. They only allowed for one retail registration at that time. So Oak Park Heights has always been our destination for a Mango location. While we applied with the city of Oak Park Heights, we were waiting for Stillwater to make a decision just because the location was such in close proximity, and that was really the area that we identified where we wanted to be, so Joseph's fit our demographics, and then also the location, I think that's roughly less than 1,000 feet away from Joseph's or so, also met the demographics of what we're looking for. So the intentions there are to open up a Mango store and then also bring one of our other sister brands, open up a location there as well. If that answers your question.
Except for the fact that I think can, that meet Stillwater's guidelines as far as distance between cannabis stores.
Does it? What was the question? I'm sorry.
Stillwater has established that you can't have a cannabis store within so many feet of a current one.
Right.
So, I mean, that's what the question is, is would you meet that requirement with Stillwater, or?
Will we meet the requirement? Is that what, was that what the question is?
Does the Stillwater site meet the requirement when you put, if you put one in Joseph's?
With Joseph's, well, I don't know, I don't, that's a great question. I would have to, I would have to ask our attorney. I don't know if their ordinance reciprocates with another municipality's ordinance as far as, like, you talking about the FED, like, the FED rule?
Right, I would think, I would assume it would, same as it would with any other restrictions that they have. I mean, if they, if there's a school, we had to make sure that it wasn't any within any schools within our, that would be in Stillwater, that of course would
Yeah, so I think
our distances would affect, therefore, I would assume that if they say you can't have a facility within 1,000 feet, and this ends up being within 1,000 feet, are we gonna...
Is it gonna be an issue, is that what you're...
Right, because, I mean, you're coming saying you want to work with us, well, or are we gonna all of a sudden give you one of the four, four that we have and turn down somebody else because, and then have you turn around and say, well, we're not gonna do it because we're gonna go here instead?
Right, right. No, I definitely understand your concern. I can assure you that's definitely not the intention. Our intention is to remodel and open the location. The Joseph's location is more ideal to us than the other location, and I believe Stillwater is still in the process, I believe, of trying to amend their ordinance and figure out a way for it to work, right? So I think there's a large probability that it might not work. I'm not 100% sure. I'll have to connect with Justin and our city attorney just to make sure. But Joseph's is the ideal location for Mango, and that's where we would like for Mango to be situated in this area. And then we've got locations planned throughout the state as well.
I think one, I don't want to put words in Councilmember Swenson's mouth, but I think he had a really great suggestion, too, about the existing shape of the Joseph's building.
Okay.
Kind of being an iconic structure. Can I pivot to you on, on your thoughts?
Yep, that's no problem. So a lot of public comments, you know, Joseph's has been a staple of the community for years.
That hurt, yeah.
And the cupola that's on the top of the roof has always been the, kind of the gathering point ever since it was Big Ben.
I was gonna say, was Big Ben was the original restaurant.
And it just, and it just kind of hits the community.
Okay.
Because they're, they're losing a staple. I mean, that was the place to go if you're going for breakfast or lunch, you go to Joseph's.
Right.
And, you know, really, I received just about as many calls on this as I did about the Highway 36 bridge.
Wow. So aesthetically, you, what you're telling me is you'd like the, the...
Change the outside enough so it doesn't look like the same. You know, that cupola that's, back when Joseph's redesigned it, we went through the building prevent, and even had Joe Kohler, if, you know, he was thinking about taking it down, and he said, no, because that kind of gives that name to the building.
Okay. You know, I'll definitely talk to architects, and I think, you know, I think it makes sense for us to fully restore it, considering, you know, you're saying that it's iconic to the city, and, you know, that's definitely, you know, something that, you know, we would like to carry on, right? Keep that here.
I'm saying, just get rid of it.
Oh, you want us to get rid of it?
Yeah, let it, let it be gone. Just, that's not the restaurant anymore. That's not, it's not what it used to be.
You want it gone?
It's part of change. I mean, that was, that was my feelings, and some of the calls that I got from citizens were, you know, that's, you're taking our breakfast place. And I said, I don't think it's gonna go far from here, but I said, yeah, we can't tell the business when to sell and when not to sell.
Right. And from my understanding, the discussions I've had with the owners of Joseph's, their plan is to relocate. So I think, you know, and everyone has been asking about it, so, and, you know, it's a staple in the community, and I'm sure it's very important to all the citizens of the community, so, and I've talked to them numerous times, and their goal is to relocate. And they're possibly thinking about relocating up the street, if I'm not mistaken. So I've talked to them a few times about it. And if you'd like to see it fully remodeled, I mean, you know, we'd love to fully remodel it and give it the character of what a Mango building, you know, would look like, and we can also provide some conceptual plans. We actually just had our architects there last week do all the measurements and whatnot, so we could provide you guys with some conceptuals and let you guys get an idea of what the future building's gonna look like as well, and get some input from you guys, so.
Thanks, Curly.
You know, I just wanted to add as well, you know, Mango, we, you know, we were founded in 2019. We're a very professional, sophisticated organization. You know, we were founded in Oklahoma originally. I'm actually originally from Michigan. And, you know, we've worked very closely over the years with legislators and with regulators in Oklahoma to help shape the Oklahoma cannabis laws and really build the industry to what it is today. You know, we've always been an outstanding operator in the state. We've had zero violations. We've never broke any rules, and if anything, we've always worked with the state and local law enforcement to help, you know, change, we're developing the laws and the rules and regulations for the industry. And actually, we just received a letter, I want to say less than a month ago, from the Attorney General in Oklahoma, a recommendation letter for our application in Texas as well. So we're definitely widely regarded in the state as great operators, and we follow the rules and we set a great example, so. And we would love to set that, excuse me, that same example in the city of Oak Park Heights, you know, do some community outreach, work with the communities, do whatever we can to support the community, and then also hire local staff. That's always our goal in every city that we operate in, is always hire local staff. But, yeah, that's all I have for today. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Where in Michigan?
Originally, I grew up in West Springfield, Oakland County. Familiar with the area?
I'm from southwestern corner, Buchanan, Niles area.
Oh, okay, yeah. We were actually looking at Niles as a future location, Niles Township, actually. It's been on the radar. Yeah, I love the area. It's a great area. We have a location, actually, that's under construction right now, in New Buffalo.
Oh, okay.
If you're familiar with that area.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That store should be open hopefully here in the next month or two, so.
So the guys that were here last time, they gave me a packet that talks about your company, and it was labeled confidential, or was not meant for public viewing. Is there some way you could get that to Jenny, and she can decipher, she can put that on the city's website? It really tells a good story about your company.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, that you hire retired law enforcement for the security and...
Do you recall which, do you have, do you have a copy of it? And I can, I can email you guys a copy, if you recall which one it was by chance.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I have a copy from our last meeting, yeah, the planning commission meeting, so.
Yeah, I could definitely email you guys a digital copy of it to share with everyone and post on the site.
Yeah, I think we'll...
And also, you know, put together, like, you know, a three, four-page informational deck for you guys, post on your deck, and then we could also include the future plans for the location for you guys to post on the website as well, to share with the residents and whatnot, what it's gonna look like, so.
Attorney Sinstrom had comments.
Yeah, well, more of a question. In terms of your licensure from the state or your preapproval from the state, do you have multiple preapprovals that allow you to set up multiple locations, or does your one preapproval allow you to set up as many shops as you'd like? How does that work at a state level in terms of the fact that you're looking to set up one in our city and one in the neighboring city? Do you have two different approvals for, or licenses for that?
Yeah, so the way it's structured in the state is they have, on the retail side, I believe, three levels of licensing. They have the Mezzo license, which allows you to operate three retail locations, a processing facility and a cultivation facility. They have a retail license, which allows you to operate five retail locations throughout the state. And then they have a micro license, which allows you to operate one location per state.
So what sort of approval do you have, and how many retail establishments does that allow you?
We have a retail approval, and it gives us, it gives us five locations throughout the state.
Essentially, two out of the five you're looking to use right next door to each other, or in close proximity?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, just a clarification on the design review and site plan review process. There is a condition listed in the resolution that if there are any changes to the site, they would still have to go through design review and site plan. So we would catch that cupola issue, and the council would have a chance to review that at a later date, so. I wouldn't add that to this condition because this is specifically for the business, but we may have to revisit, revisit that later.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the effort?
For that, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Littlegerd.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Councilmember Swenson.
Yes.
And Mayor Doherty.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Item D, consider issuance...
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to speak.
This isn't a public hearing.
Oh, it is not.
No, the public hearing was at the planning commission meeting.
Oh, I scrolled through.
Yeah, okay. Right. Item D, consider issuance of a license to sell cannabinoid products for Kowalski's.
Mayor, Council, Kowalski's Oak Park Heights Market has applied for a license to sell cannabinoid, cannabinoid products and related devices at their business located at 5801 Neal Avenue North. The application has been investigated by the city attorney's office, the police department, and found to be in compliance with city ordinance requirements for license issuance, and the investigation fee has been paid. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the cannabinoid license contingent on approval from the state of Minnesota and payment of the license fee, and this would be through the end of 2025.
And this would be primarily for, like, seltzer and that, that they...
Correct. Mayor, members of the council, Kowalski's wants to sell the low potency seltzers in their wine shop, in their alcohol shop.
I'll make a motion to approve the license.
Second. Is that a roll call, or do... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, are there any other council items or announcements?
So will that, approving that one, will that count as one of our four licenses then?
No.
No.
So that's a separate licensing.
That's a separate category, and as many as businesses prefer to sell those low potency hemp-related products, the state allows as many as apply for it.
Yeah, we currently sell them at Bowling Alley in, where is it?
Just one of all liquor stores.
By Starbucks, and that one's stripped to...
Turning with, yeah, Mayor and Council, with this approval, this will be the fifth license you've issued in the city of Oak Park Heights for those, for that type of product.
So Chief, you do compliance audits on these?
Yep.
And will this store be in the compliance audits, too? I asked a question, I thought they said no.
No, just clarifying, Kowalski's or...
The Joseph's one, the new one, the Mango.
That's definitely done with the Office of Cannabis Management. Still waiting on clarification on what our rule is gonna look like.
So can we get ahead of that ball and make sure that we've got, we can do that?
Yep.
So, I mean, how, how would we make that part of the deal where our officers can actually do a compliance check on it if we want?
As I understand it, we'll go forward in that direction.
Okay.
State is part of that component.
Yeah, I think there's been a, part of the issue with those is, I think the state is more than happy to have cities engaging compliance, and I think the bigger issue is cities are saying, we're not getting compensated enough with the registration costs to justify all the enforcement efforts that we're gonna have to undertake. So, and if, if anything, it's, I think, cities pushing back and wanting, waiving the Office of Cannabis Management to be more actively involved in the enforcement efforts, but certainly, I think our officers would be entitled to go in and check enforcement just as a matter of routine process.
Okay, if not, then we'll be going into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The members of the council, we have on our agenda tonight a closed session in relation to the city administrator Jacob Reif's annual performance review. This is gonna be a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D .05 subdivision 3A, which allows for employee